Some very wonderful guests today as always, but excited for you to get to know them a little more. So thank you so much for joining us. I know it's difficult sometimes to wake up early on a Friday morning, but I promise you this meeting will be well worth it. My name is Gracie Simninger. I'm the president of Downtown Council of the Jacksonville Chamber. I want to remind everyone that we're recording the session today and this recording will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. If you haven't already searched the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so now and hit subscribe. I also want to share a little bit about some incredible April events, in-person events we had last month that were just amazing. So for any of you that were on the call, that are on the call now and attended them, thank you so much for joining us. We hosted a downtown walking tour with Enes Davis of the Jackson and Katie Derringer of JWB Real Estate Capital and started at the beautiful Estrella Cosina, which is downtown's newest rooftop bar and restaurant. That one was so much fun. So thank you Laura Edgcombe for helping to organize that. It truly was an incredible day outside. In addition, as you may know, we started a new downtown fit club where we meet on the fourth Tuesday of every month in front of the Chamber building and go on a walk, run, bike, stroll, whatever, whatever you're feeling along the Riverwalk. And so our inaugural Fit Club meetup was this past month and it was fun. So thank you all for participating that as well. Just to provide a brief overview of who we are, if you're new to Downtown Council, we are one of eight Chamber councils and simply put, we care about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. And our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to hearing from different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top-tier speakers to our meetings. I'm very excited for today's speaker, Dr. Andrea Barnwell-Brownlee, who's the Director and CEO of the Commer Museum of Art and Gardens. She'll be sharing more about her leadership as she takes on this new role and vision for Jacksonville's Riverfront Gem, which is the Commer. I also want to recognize the new Director of Chamber Councils, Kathy Sutton. She's going to be our liaison for the council. We're really excited to have her in this new role. I actually worked with her in her previous role over the beaches division, so excited for her to move in to the council's role. And I also want to thank Amanda Patch and Meg Hines for all their work, doing behind-the-scenes work from the chamber side. So thank you Amanda for all your help and Meg for always being a great resource. If you are, so I am a volunteer. I don't work for the Chamber. This is a volunteer role and we actually have a 17-member board. So if you are a Downtown Council Board Member, will you please wave to our attendees this morning and say hello? So this group is incredible group and we would love your feedback. So if you have any thoughts on, you know, topics you'd like to see, speakers you'd like to see, please let us know. We'd love to hear from you. At this time, I will now recognize all new members to the Downtown Council. Mr. Thomas Lee of Lee and Kate's Glass, thank you so much for renewing your membership. And also Daniel Nun of Nelson Mullins Riley and Scarborough LLP. Welcome to Downtown Council. Now I'm going to turn it over to our Downtown Council Small Business Leader of the Year, Mr. Jim Webb, to introduce our spotlight speaker for today's meeting. Jim, take it away.
Good morning, everybody. Hope everyone is getting ready for the weekend. I'm taking a small staycation out in Neptune Beach, so I'm going to enjoy the, just being here in Jacksonville and enjoying all the things that we have here. But this morning I'd like to introduce Dr. Bridget Edkin. She's actually the overall Small Business Leader of the Year 2021. She is with, she'll tell you the correct pronunciation. Chiropractic. And she's one of the most amazing firebrands that I've met throughout the council. She is, she is a bully of pests tomorrow. And she loves to speak about what her passion is, which is chiropracting. And she's third-generation chiropractor and the ninth in her family. And she gave me all this really fun information about chiropractic, but I think I'd rather have her talk about herself than me try to parrot a bio. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bridget. Thank you so much for being here, Bridget.
Thank you. I see so many people I know and love on here. This is exciting, being over in the beach. I didn't feel like I was going to know anyone downtown and now I do, friends over here. My office looks beautiful because of Sean Stenson over there. So I get compliments on it all the time still, Sean. Well, so I am Dr. Bridget and we operate Slancha Chiropractic. It looks like slanty and it sounds like slancha. It's a word that means to your health in Irish. And I am 110% Irish in my heart and I'm married to Puerto Rican, so the only baby I'm going to have that looks Irish is going to be my office. So I have gorgeous kids though, so I'm really happy about it. I practice with my husband Vincent and together we really focus and specialize on taking care of people from preconception through prenatal and pediatrics. We also take care of adults of all shapes and sizes, of all worries and complaints that traditional chiropractic does. What's really special and what's different about us is that we are neurologically focused chiropractors. So in addition to addressing just the spine, we know that the spine holds and protects our nervous system and our spinal cord. Without our nervous system, our brain wouldn't be able to coordinate a single thing in our body. And so because of that, we honor that in our office and we actually track it with technology that shows us how each nerve is functioning. And so since we know the spinal cord controls and coordinates every single function of our life, from our heart beating to our lungs breathing, to that sciatica that everyone thinks about chiropractic with, it will help any condition that anyone has. And so one of my favorite things to do is I work with frustrated couples who are struggling to conceive. I help them achieve some health with the side effect of pregnancy. So we've had a lot of couples come through and they are the unexplained fertility or they just haven't been able to be successful with IVF or IUI. And we get them healthy and then all of a sudden they're pregnant because two healthy people normally should be able to conceive. And we have a very stressed society that is very depleted and very just strung out. And chiropractic can help alleviate that stress on the system, help the body adapt. And through a protocol we do called the Schaefer Protocol in the office, it helps them achieve that health and then we see children. So I hold babies all the time that wouldn't have existed if they hadn't come into my office. People say to me, "I thank God for you every day, Dr. B," which always like just makes my heart explode just because they have a life that they never thought they could. With pregnancy, we actually get help with birth time and birth pain by up to 40%. And there's no woman that wouldn't sign up for that. And with pediatrics, we have some of the sickest kids we've ever had in the world. And so my husband's actually a pediatric expert. He's done 1,000 extra hours outside of regular chiropractic school and just pediatrics and pregnancy. And so if anyone was going to put their hands on your child's spine and work with their brain-body connection, it's my husband's the guy. There's only 10 people in the state of Florida that have the certification that he has. And so he's real nerdy, but we see kids with autism sensory processing disorder and difficulties like that. His favorite is babies just born that can't latch and so they're having a frustrating breastfeeding relationship and that baby cannot, that's too painful for the mom or the milk isn't coming because they can't put their mouth around the nipple or anything. That it's such an easy fix for us with the baby because it's usually their jaw issue or an upper cervical issue. And it's very gentle. Adjustments for kids are not the same as adults. There's no like big, big noises and things like that. It's very gentle. It's much like testing an avocado to see if it's ready for guacamole. So we've been at the beach for four years. We really love it. So I'm excited you're having your staycation over here in this beautiful area. I surrendered my life to Christ about 11 years ago at the Church of 1122. And when I was praying about where I should go, God just kept leading me back to this amazing community. And that's why I live here. So I just love, I love everything Jacksonville has to offer. I have no reason to be here outside of it's just the greatest city in the world. And to bring what we do, we're the only people who do Gonstead chiropractic with a neurological focus from Atlanta to Orlando. So you're not going to find what we do in our office anywhere else in Jacksonville, but also for quite some time, six hours north and three hours south. So we really love, we have people that drive from Tallahassee and from St. Augustine and from Bogarotone just to come get care in our office because of what we do. So that's a little bit about us. I have a really sweet video business card. I would love if you guys checked it out on our website. It was made by Trey Volmer. He's another SBLY for this season, but it's 2 minutes and 18 seconds and it really is a great way to share what I've shared with you today with anyone if you think it would benefit. But also I would just love that feedback for him and for myself if you got something out of that video business card. So I can email that to you or if you want to check it out on our Facebook or our website, it's on both places. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bridget. And now I'm going to turn it over to Laura, who's going to keep the ball rolling.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. My name is Laura Phillips Edgcombe and I am in real life, the Director of Catering Events and Community for the Brennan Board, Australia Cosina and the Brennan Burger now. And for the Jack Chamber Downtown Council, I am Program Director. So I get the honor every Friday of introducing our speakers, which is, you know, for those of you that are on this regularly with us, I get very excited and I fangirl a lot, but it's only because we have some amazing speakers and today is no different. This one, we've actually been trying to get Andrea on for the better part of since it was announced that she was coming to the Commer. So I'm really excited that all the worlds collided and we were finally able to make this happen, which Wanda, I want to thank you because you helped facilitate that. So thank you so much for making it all work. I'm going to read a short bio on Andrea so everyone can kind of get to know her. You know, these are words there. Like once she starts speaking, you're just going to be enamored and you're going to fall in love with everything she has to say and her vision for the Commer. So let me do, let me do the black and white part and then she can go and enjoy and fill in all the colors. So Andrea Barnwell-Brownlee, PhD, is an art historian, curator and writer. She's the Commer's Director and CEO, newly there, not even been there a year. We were just talking, she just came in in December, which is so crazy. It feels like, you know, a million years since. She served as the Director of Spelman College Museum of Fine Art for nearly 20 years and the Senior Strategist for the Atlanta University Center Art History and Curatorial Studies Collective. She's widely recognized for her wise leadership, ambitious vision and influential publications. Brownlee is the recipient of several academic, professional and scholarly awards, including the 2013 David C. Driscoll Prize in African-American Art. She's curated and co-curated many exhibitions, most recently Deborah Roberts, The Evolution of Mimi, which was in 2018, and Mildred Thompson, The Atlanta Years, 1983 to 2003. That particular exhibition was in 2019. Brownlee is a member of the Association of Art Museum Directors and serves on the Board of Advisors for the National Museum of Art at Duke University. She aims to build upon the Commer's tremendous legacy. Like she knows where the Commer stands. She understands where like the foundation of what it is. So she's working in collaboration with the Board of Trustees and Stakeholders to make the growing collection engaging exhibitions and nationally-recognized education programs accessible to the entire community and beyond that. And that's what she's going to speak to is her 100-day plan and where they're at and where they're going here on day 101. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Andrea Barnwell-Brownlee.
Good morning. I'm happy to be with you all. Certainly I bring greetings on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Commer Museum of Art and Gardens, but first and foremost, just want to say thank you for the invitation. You know, when Wanda and I were putting our heads together one day and we were talking strategy, you know, I'm sure you all know that Wanda is the Director of Community Engagement and Inclusion. We're having this conversation about what happens after the 100 days. Who do you want to meet? Who do you need to get in front of? All of that stuff. And without flinching, without hesitation, she said, "You all." She told me that you all are committed. I love the words like thrive and brave, but she also shared with me that you like to have fun. So this is something that I was very, very excited to book and get on the calendar. So thank you, Wanda, for making that happen. Thank you also for the opportunity to be in conversation and in community with Dr. Bridget. I look forward to meeting you soon. I laughed when you said, "Dr. B", because my students, that's what they call me as well. So maybe this is in divine order, but they say it, they said, "Dr.," they say, "Dr. B" because Barnwell-Brownlee, without a hyphen, is just such a tongue twister and it just became so confusing. So again, so happy to be in community with you. You know, when we were having our pre-party before the party, we were talking about how special the Commer Museum of Art and Gardens is. And so, you know, Brian shared getting married, getting married there. Everyone seems to have a story about the Commer Museum of Art and Gardens. So I am so thrilled to be here, so heart thrilled to just share with you some of the things that I'm working on and have my, my, up my sleeve. So finger on the pulse of a lot. Hopefully you all can see my, my screen that I just started sharing. No problems? Great. So as many of you all know, we have an exceptional mission and I can share with you that not too many institutions can really, really talk about having this, this incredible three-part, three-tiered focus. Some people have a, have a, an education program, but they certainly don't have gardens like ours. So it's a really, really special place. You all know, I'm not going to read all these slides because I have found and I have been told that when I get excited and get going, I go over my time. So I want to make sure that I stay on point. So you know, there are three things that are really, really top of mind, really, really top of mind. And I'm so excited that we have this incredible 59 and a half-year history that we're building upon. So one of the first things that I'm focused on continuing is this legacy of providing a platform for engaging experiences. I hope that some of you might have heard about our exhibition that opened about three weeks ago entitled Zeneli Moholy, Sonyama Gonyama, Hail the Dark Lioness. Zeneli Moholy is an artist, a visual activist from South Africa, currently based in Durban. And their photography is out of this world. We have welcomed so many visitors, first-time visitors as well as regular, regular members and friends that make it a point to visit us frequently. So I'm so happy to show you all, this is one sneak little preview. I'm not sure if you all have had a chance to come over yet, but I really, really welcome the opportunity to welcome you back to the Commer if you haven't been in recent, in recent days. But again, this idea of really focusing on engaging experiences is really top of mind for me. Amplifying access for all. You know, one of the things I love about people like, like Brian who share that they got married at the Commer is that it has a special place in so many people's hearts. I talk to a lot of people and I love hearing how special the Commer has, has been. But I also have to say that there are lots of people that I've talked to and I just start randomly talking to people on a regular basis. So when I talk to them and they say, "Well, you know, we've never been. Where is it? We've never felt welcome there. We've never gotten an invitation." All of these things I'm filing away and we're taking action. We have an incredible team, not just a staff, but also an incredible board. And this idea of amplifying access for all is something that we are really, really going to be just headstrong about and we're excited about this, this journey. The Commer Museum has so many things to offer. Another photograph, hopefully it's not too much of a spoiler alert if you are coming to see the Zeneli Moholy exhibition, but we want to make certain that we are open doors and that we're about access. There are so many people who have said to me also, you know, "I don't live in the right zip code." And it perplexes me because we've got work to do. We have not allowed people to understand and to know that we are here for all of Jacksonville and beyond. So a quick note about Zeneli Moholy. They, as I mentioned, are a visual activist. And they are specifically interested in LGBTQ communities, not just in South Africa, but around, around the world. And so when we start thinking about this, this group of incredible self-portraits, I mean, they are electrifying. I have seen people do everything in this exhibition from drop their jaw to cry to just frankly not wanting to leave the space for hours on end. So this entire exhibition is a group of self-portraits that they have created over the last seven years. And again, it, it has been an incredible, incredible journey. So this idea of amplifying access, not just for who comes in the door, but also for who's on the wall. We're very, very excited about this. Certainly our permanent collection, we want everyone to know, access for all means not just the opportunity to come see the special exhibitions that are on just for, for a season, but also certainly spending time with our permanent collection. I love this photograph so much because not only does it show that our holdings in terms of contemporary practice, but it also features a work by Mildred Thompson, who was of course a Jacksonville, who was born in Jacksonville. So in the interest of time, I really want to, just want to center for a moment on make it fun. Again, when Wanda told me that this group had extended an invitation, I was very, very excited because making it fun, I had to add an exclamation point. I don't typically write with exclamation points, but I had to write an exclamation point for this group because I was so compelled. As I was looking at archival photographs, who can resist? Who can resist including this? Making it fun isn't just about young people. It certainly does focus on them, but it's also about families. Who doesn't love, you know, Connect Four, Commer Connect Four? Who, who, who doesn't love this? So we are a space that is continuing to make sure that amplifying fun remains top of mind. There's something that you all probably heard of and I have never just yet had the, had the opportunity to experience, but it's called, it's called Summer at the Commer. And I'm so excited. I am so, so, so very excited that when you activate the backyard of the Commer, the backspace, this is what it can, could, should look like. And I understand this is one of the tame, this is one of the tame days. There are often times where it's so bustling that you can barely see the green space. I understand that this is truly, truly one of the most magical times of the year for the Commer. The other thing that I love is that, you know, it's one thing to activate your backyard. When you activate your front yard, this is a different level of fun. This is a different level of welcome. And you know, my predecessor, who I'm sure that many of you all had a chance to meet, his name is Adam Levine. And this place, he said, is electrifying. This museum is extraordinary. I have to tell you, when he called and told me that he was actually leaving and asked me to consider it, I said, "No." I said, "Not, not, not right now." The timing, the timing was all wrong. I was happy. I was doing all of those things. But over time, speaking to a number of individuals, it just became very, very clear that this would be an exceptional opportunity and experience, not just for me, but also for my family. So again, when you activate your front yard, it's a whole nother, nother level. So how are we going to go about doing this? You know, I'm very, very focused on organizational excellence. There are so many things, you know, we're, we're about to turn 60, as I mentioned, in November. And as somebody who believes that 60 is the new 40, we've got work to do and we've got to focus on organizational excellence and continue to build on things. You know, when you, when your building starts to turn 60, things happen ranging from HVAC to chillers. So we're, we're getting ready. We're also getting ready to realign our efficiencies and think about how we can continue to serve the stakeholders better. There are so many things on the horizon in that regard. A lot of these things are behind the scenes, but our hope is that the work that we put in behind the scenes is really going to reflect and be a part of our stakeholder experience. But I'm also committed to being a good neighbor, which is why when Wanda said, you know, "Hey, let's make this happen," I said, "Absolutely." So I'd be remiss if I did not pause for a moment to talk about aligning the museum and our growth with the growth of Jacksonville. One of the reasons I said yes to this opportunity is simply because Jacksonville is on the move in ways that are exceptional. I know I'm preaching to the choir here. The other thing that happened the other day was a board member sent this great article and I'm sure that you all saw it. It was in Forbes and it was something like, "What to do on a layover in Jacksonville?" And it said, "You stay at the Omni, you go to the zoo, you go to these wonderful restaurants, you come to the Commer and you take your flight back out." How wonderful was it, is it, is it to be to think about being a destination for fun, for art, for culture, for an amazing place to live and to thrive and to visit also. So something I'm very, very excited about is thinking about this trajectory of, of forward momentum and continuing on this path. I personally believe, like so many other people in my field, that you cannot have a great city without a great art museum and without a great and thriving art culture. So this is what we're all about. These are the strategies that we're really implementing in order to get there. You know, again, spending time in the gardens, we ask people what they think about when they think about the Commer Museum. The gardens are what comes, come first for most people. And I'm so excited about that, which is why we're focusing so much on integrating the gardens into so much more of what we do. As you all probably also know, the gardens were the first part of our campus that opened after the pandemic, or I shouldn't say after, during the pandemic. Everybody needed a place to be outside. People needed a respite. People needed someplace that could really, really think about disengaging from all of this, this crazy, even if it was temporarily. So our gardens continue to have a very, very special place. So in the spirit of being a good neighbor, I hope you all will, will be in touch. I'm certainly going to make it my business to be in touch with you all and to, to connect. And you know, again, the 100-day plan, so many people have used this, this analogy and this metaphor of drinking from this fire hose. It's, it's, it's an incredible fire hose. And some days I think that the, that the diameter on the hose keeps getting bigger and bigger, but I'm here for it. I'm excited about being here, here for it. And just look forward to being in conversation and in community with all of you on a regular basis. And really, again, thankful for the invitation to be in community with you all this morning. So thank you.
You're welcome. We are, we are thankful to you for coming. You know, it's, it's, it's nice to hear since, since you came to Jacksonville, right? Like you, I go in the chat, you're like, "I grew up going to the Commer. I did all these kinds of things," right? It's really interesting to listen to your emotion behind the Commer, not coming from Jacksonville, right? Like not growing up here, going every time or being married there like Brian was and those kinds of things. It's, it's a testament to, to your love for art. And you know, it's nice to know that you're falling in love with Jacksonville as well. We all love it a whole bunch. And with that, so kind of, and I forgot to say this when I did my, my spiel in the beginning and I apologize. If you have questions, put them in the chat and I will moderate. And Andrea, I'm going to kind of go back and forth with you, talk about what we're talking about and you can answer questions and kind of go from there. I do appreciate that you are being mindful of time. We try very hard to be mindful of time. And so I do appreciate you taking, taking that into consideration. So let's go. So this question's from Anne-Marie Knight. "The Commer has a very traditional and classic history. That's important, but it is wonderful to see what is being woven in. What were the top two or so things that drew you to our city and the Commer once you checked us out?"
Top two? Oh my goodness. Being mindful of time. No, there were several things, several things, because of course I was happy where I was, right? I was very, very happy. And it definitely took something very special to even make me, you know, take a, take a second, take a second look. The Commer's commitment to the challenge was very appealing to me. When they asked me, "What would it take for you to say yes?", my response was, "I really have to know that you all, as a board, as a search committee, are comfortable with being uncomfortable." I said, "Because this field, this industry of ours that we love, the museum industry is an ivory tower." And if there's one thing that we know from this last year is that if you're not relevant, you will be out of business. You will be out of business. And I wanted to know more about this, this city. And so what drew me was the understanding and the real reckoning with the fact that there was a craving for something more, for something different, for something bigger, something broader. I will share with you that a second thing that drew me to this city was my husband did two tours here in the Navy. He loved, loved, loved Jacksonville. And we'd been on vacation. Yep, we'd been on vacation. And I just said, "You know, let's, let, let me just go down and talk to them." I was minding my business. I was happy at Spelman. I love my students. I love every, every, everything that was happening. But at the same time, how could I sit here and tell them to be brave and cast your net wide and do all those other things that you tell seniors when they're about to graduate? And I wasn't open to doing the same. So saying yes to Jacksonville became very, very easy. But I do remember a moment on the plane where I said, "Okay." But I do remember a moment on the plane where I said, okay, I know the search committee has narrowed it down, narrowed it down to a couple of people. But there was a moment on the plane, knowing how excited my husband was, knowing how excited I was about just spending the day with the search committee, that I said, wait a minute. If they don't choose me, we're gonna have a situation here. We're gonna have a real situation. So I say all that to say that I love to tell that story because it wasn't automatic. It was something that I had to actually be on the ground and, and experience. My only other time here was 2018 during the Augusta Savage exhibition. So I was happy to come back and thrilled to be here permanently now.
That's great. And for you to be here for that particular exhibition in 2018, that's interesting, especially kind of as we're going into the world that we're in right now, right?
Absolutely.
That was a very, it was, it was, I mean, I'm sure you know, it caused a lot of stir here in Jacksonville. There were a lot of people that were uncomfortable. And so it's wonderful to kind of see like your plans and the education side of the exhibitions that you're bringing in, which some people talk about in the questions. We'll get to that because people are asking as well. So John Bryan, he asked, what are the latest acquisitions for the collection?
The latest acquisitions are actually this incredible motorized series of hummingbirds. We try to think about nature. I know, they're, they're, they were in the cross pollination exhibition and we're very, very excited about that acquisition. But I will tell you, again, in the spirit of 60 being the new 40, I think there's going to be a very, very exciting and dynamic series of, of acquisitions in celebration of our milestone anniversary.
Okay, to that, so this one's from, another question from Anne Marie. This exhibition puts DEI at the forefront of art. How do you think it helps us learn and expand our thinking?
What I love about diversity, equity, inclusion and access is indeed the word access. It encapsulates so many things that are really at the fiber of, of who I am and the foundation of what the, the Comer strives to be. You know, I'll, 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 I'll share with you a quick story. When I told somebody that we were bringing this exhibition, which was not on the schedule, I'll, I'll share the short story with you in a moment, but I said, Muholi identifies as queer, non-binary. And they said to me, you can't say that. And I said, well, what, what do you mean? They said, well, you can't say queer. And I said, well, what do you mean? They said, that's, that's offensive. And I said, well, I talked about the history of, of, and the evolution of, of, of the term and how it's been embraced by so many LGBTQ communities. And they, they, we had a different type of understanding. I say all of that to say that it's, it's, it's time to, to acknowledge that we're all, we're better together. We're better together and diversity, equity, access and inclusion. I make sure that certainly I use the acronym. I, I mix up the, the, the words on purpose because I don't want people to get comfortable with DEA. I don't want to get people, people to get comfortable with saying, changing it to idea, changing the letters around so it spells idea. I don't want it to be comfortable. I want us to regularly spell out the words. We get these acronyms become shorthand for all sorts of stuff. We've got to keep this idea of diversity, equity, access and inclusion top of mind. So it's very much something that we're focused on and it's going to impact every single dimension of our operation over time. You know, not only our exhibitions, but our hiring, who comes through the doors, who feels welcome, you name it. So I, I could go on and on about diversity, equity, inclusion and access, but excited about it.
Well, and you know, and to that, you know, it kind of, without having, and seeing that was the question, you know, making the comment that I did. I mean, I, I think especially for the generations, I mean, those of us that have children or grandchildren, you know, we, we need our, we need the next generations to be raised in an environment where it's not uncomfortable for them, right? Like, because it's just, it's, it's not, and I get a thing. It's not a, it's not a change. It's just how it is because it's how it's supposed to be. So, you know, for, for a cultural institution such as the Comer to be a place that it's just, it's like every day. So, you know, there's nothing wrong, nothing different. I think that's wonderful for our next generations. And, you know, because that's, that's who's gonna be taking care of all of us when we're old. So, and, you know, well-rounded. Okay, next one. This one's from Darren White. Jacksonville's cultural and artistic history, particularly its black community, has had an immense impact on our nation and so many other artists, but it's often underrepresented here. How can we, as a community, talk about these achievements, see them and more? Many are also currently at work doing exciting things at Cork and other places. Like how are you guys working together?
So I, I agree wholeheartedly. I, I must say that when I did come to see the Augusta Savage exhibition, I, full disclosure, we loaned a work from Spelman's collection to that show, which is why we were on vacation and I said, well, absolutely, I'm gonna make it a priority to come. So I frankly, at that moment, was not aware of how rich Jacksonville, you know, is and was in terms of, of art and culture. So for me, that was a gateway. That was a real, real gateway. You, you mentioned Cork specifically. I have not had an opportunity to go over to Cork, but I've heard so much about it and I've had an opportunity to have coffee with several of the artists that are, that, that call it home, call it studio, call it a really special place. And I think that, you know, part of this idea of having a rich and vibrant culture is certainly the care and keeping of the artists that are based here. I think that encouraging them through everything from studio, from studio visits to conversations to finding out what are their wildest dreams. And I, I also tell people, you know, everybody wants to know, you know, how do you go about making decisions about the artists that you champion, the artists that you present, all of those things? I spend time, I spend time with artists, but I also have to, to share with you that we have an incredible opportunity here in this city to make additional hires, to expand what we're doing. And I'm bringing this up in this context because over time, not too much time, I hope, but over time, expanding our curatorial staff is a real priority. I'm sure that many of you all had the great opportunity to spend time with Holly Karas, who's our chief curator. But when I tell you she is doing the job of four people, I'm really not exaggerating because she's also currently over the gardens. I say, I say it in this way, that we've got to expand our curatorial staff. We've got to make sure that she is not the only person that is doing this work. I happen to be a curator, not just an arts administrator, so I love this stuff. It really does jazz me up. But at the same time, this expanding the conversation, it begins in artist studios. It frankly, it ends in artist studios. And I'm excited about being a part of championing and learning more about all they do here.
When you kind of talk to like, you know, growing, adding staff, curators, whatnot, what are the other plans for expanding the Comer? Like?
Certainly, certainly. So you all know on the Post Street side of, of our, our property, which is the garden club side of the property, we, we have incredible opportunities. The land is, 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 it, it is certainly, it's, it's prime. And by prime, I'm really referring to all of the plans I've heard and seen, specifically about the Post Street, the dock that's being planned for the Post Street side. I will share with you that we have not landed as a staff and as a board on specifically what that will be. But believe you me, these are really, really specific conversations. I'd be remiss if I did, did not mention that conversations about the riverfront are, are exciting and they're dynamic. And again, we're here for it. I think that between-
Let me hang up on this Zoom meeting.
Okay. I understand.
Can't win them all.
So, you know, the, the, this, it's exciting. It's exciting between the engineers that are out there, that are going to help us make, not only protect the historic nature of, of our, our gardens, but also think about access in new ways. It's an incredible time to be here. It's a really important and special time. So I can't give you specifics right now, but know that is indeed very much on our radar. And I did see Nancy Powell earlier on, on the call. And excited about connecting with her in, in person. I'm excited about what's happening just in our, in our, our block, you know? The block is exciting, so.
It is. We had Nancy speak, gosh, it feels like forever ago now, but we had Nancy speak a couple, a few months back. And like listening to her then and knowing what's changed since then and been added. And like, I mean, the activation in general is amazing.
Powerful. I agree, the block is hot. I didn't want to say it because it was Friday, I was gonna say it to the very end, but the block is hot.
But that's great. Like when you think about the community as a whole and like how, you know, the Riverside, Avondale, Five Points area is connecting to downtown, right? And we as a downtown council, there's a ton of people that are part of council downtown that are not in downtown, right? They, they're part of council to stay relevant for the city itself. And I think that that's important when we talk about, you know, bringing in the density and bringing in activations and like, how do we do that? You know, for us to get into that Forbes article about like, you know, the Comer, like, you know, we're in Jacksonville for 24 hours, here's what you need to do. I mean, it's such a big deal.
Isn't that awesome?
Yes, it's crazy.
Really, really, really awesome. So when we talk about growth and what's happening and, you know, the conversations that, that Nancy's really championing and all of those things, it, it's, it's an incredible time, indeed, indeed. It's an incredible time.
Well, so to that, you know, we talked about some of the changes in the expansion. What are your plans to reach the children of our community? This is from Kimberly Waterhouse, sorry. But what are your plans to reach the children of our community that don't have access to the arts? And how can we as a council and us as individuals help facilitate that?
So one of the things that also drew me to Jacksonville was the nationally recognized education programs that, that the museum boasts. Certainly there's loads more work to do and they are getting after it in very, very real, deliberate ways. Certainly the pandemic has caused them to do our favorite word, which has become pivot, and offer more things online. The other thing that we're doing is trying to figure out, you know, there are a lot of virtual programs that are happening. And although the summer is providing a bit of relief in terms of the numbers fluctuating, I'll say, I won't say going down, but at least fluctuating, we are, are doing more things, trying to be both safe and accessible. The things that we're doing in terms of reaching children that don't have access to the arts are multifold. First, we are calling on our, our affinity groups to continue to help us raise resources, to do basic things like even cover buses, even make sure that we can make sure that when we need extra people on hand to provide workshops and to, to, to make certain that there are, there are opportunities, more opportunities for people to come. We haven't talked about this extensively because of COVID, but I really believe in reciprocating. You know, it's not simply about inviting people to, to your house. It's about spending time with people on, on, on their, at their homes.
Yeah.
You know, so there are organizations that we go out to regularly and spend time with them, whether it's workshops, whether it's conversations regularly. But expanding that support base, expanding that, that, that service base is really top of mind. But again, we've got to grow. We've got to grow our staff and grow our resources in order for us to serve better.
Okay. Well, what, so in addition, like, it's like all these questions kind of like, kind of go together, which is nice. I love meetings like this in the morning, whenever all the questions kind of flow really nicely together. So thank you, all the participants this morning. You're doing a great job making those Q and A. What will it take for the Comer to stay relevant over time, right? Like we talk about reaching out to children, like those kinds of things, the generational side of it and how you make it accessible. So how, what are the plans for the future to keep the Comer relevant and to keep those children wanting to come and us as the parents wanting to come and the grandparents wanting to come and those sorts of things?
Sure. You know, it's funny, as we think about what Brian shared earlier about the, having the wedding photographs taken there.
Yeah.
I should also insert and, and, and mention and input that the other thing that's very, very telling is the number of people that have said, I took classes at the Comer when I was a pre-teen. And now I am a mother and I'm bringing my children. I'm bringing my children there. I'm saying that this should be about passing things on. This should be about a destination. And so I am very, very passionate about making sure it's not a one top, one stop shop. The exhibitions, it's very, very important that we continue to keep the exhibitions as well as the permanent collection relevant. But I'd also be remiss if I did not say that we have a brand new space, revitalized space called Art Connections. And it's been there for quite some time, but we recently refreshed it over COVID. We took the time when we were closed to revitalize that space and allow people to, to come with their families and to experience new things. You have to rethink things like touch and interactive in this, in this particular moment. So you've taken the time to do that. It's an exceptional space that, again, just really, really encouraging families to come. So we're, we're trying different ways to make sure that this is about lifelong learning and lifelong engagement.
Sorry, I didn't mean to pause. I just read this one that's kind of cute and funny, sorry. So to that, as you talk about spaces that maybe haven't been activated or engaged and now, you know, you're taking the time and the steps to go forward, I mean, doing that, is there a cool little secret place? This is from, this is from Dr. B, this is from Bridget. Is there a cool little secret place at the Comer that you love that's not so well-known? And if so, what is it?
Yeah, now I'm, I'm gonna share this space, but if I turn up and Dr. Bridget is there, we might have a challenge. We, we, we might have a challenge. I'm gonna whisper this, I'm gonna whisper it because if you go into the Italian garden and you go to the left, there is right up against that, the, the, the wall that divides it from the Olmsted Garden, there is a wrought iron table and four chairs. That is my go-to. So people think it's the oak and it is. People think it's that incredible oak. Don't let me find you there in my time. I'll share the space. I'll share the space with you. But if I come, we'll have to share it. We'll definitely have to share it.
That gave me goosebumps. That sounds like just the way you described it, it sounds so peaceful.
It's right on the water, right on the water, on the edge of the Italian garden.
I love that. So we have, we have, we have quite a few people that are asking, what are the upcoming events in May and June? And then also, how can we help? Like, is it financial? Is it getting the word out? Like, what can we do? We're really big with the speakers that we bring, especially the philanthropics. Like, it's important to us as, as a council to be able to get the word out on how we can help. So what are some of the upcoming events? And then how can we help the Comer meet some of these goals that they're wanting, that y'all are wanting to do?
So a couple of things. I had to get out my pen because I want to make sure I don't miss a beat.
Nice.
The first is Summer at the Comer. Again, I am so excited about Summer at the Comer, not only because it's my first time, because it has been described as nothing short of electrifying. So definitely make plans to spend, you know, a Friday, a Saturday with us. We love the fact that so many of our supporters have, you know, made Friday nights free for us. And so Summer at the Comer, help us activate not just the backyard, but also the front yard. So if we want to be accessible, let's prove it. Secondly, I want you to hold my feet to the fire. I want you to hold me accountable, hold me accountable. I told my staff yesterday that, I said, in this day and six months, in this day and one year, let's revisit the things, the promises that we've made together. So I want, I want to be a good neighbor. I don't pretend to know everyone just yet. So, you know, it's this, it's this real oxymoron, Laura, because on one hand, my calendar is a complete train wreck.
Right. Yeah, I understand that.
An utter train wreck. But I have a real desire and a commitment to being a good neighbor and to make sure that we're reciprocating and learning, learning about people outside of this, this box. I was talking to a board member the other day who I'd never met in person and we finally had a chance to meet. And I just said, on Zoom, you're not this tall. You're not this tall on Zoom, you know? And so I just, I, I, I just, I can't say enough about what the personal connection means to me. So really, really holding my feet to the fire and let's do it in person. Please visit, please visit. You ask, you know, what you can do, please visit for a couple of reasons. This exhibition is very, very special to me, not only because I, you know, it's, it's the first exhibition that I'm completely here, here in town for, but also because of this incredible finest I have from Muholi. So, you know, there were people who said, wait, is Jacksonville ready for this type of show? I'm like, what type is this? And so let's, let's have a conversation about type, you know? Let's really, really have a conversation about that. So visit, help us break some records. I'm on a mission. Someone said to me the other day that our numbers are, are so high, they're staggeringly high that they, we have- that our numbers are, are so high, they're staggeringly high that they, we have exceeded where we were last June before, before COVID, which is incredible. And I say that humbly. I say it humbly because there are colleagues across the country whose museums aren't even open yet, right? So I say it with incredible gratitude. I was talking to my husband about it. I said, okay, we're, we're back to our, you know, COVID numbers. But then I said, no, wait a minute. Now what we really need to do is break the records. What's the highest attended? Let's go for the highest attendance. More, more, more. So I say all this to say, come visit, come visit. Let us know. Give us your feedback, all of those things. Um, and participate in some of our programs, our talk backs. As Wanda knows, we have opened up the doors for conversation. This show is, is doing what art should, should do across the board, which is make people talk. Have hard conversations, have rich conversations. So participate in our programs. And finally, you know, you ask how you can help. I know everybody on this call is a member. I already know that.
There, everyone's talking about it in the chat right now. Everyone is talking about, if I wasn't, I've just joined, like everyone.
Hands up, praise him. Because I really, really do believe that in order for us to say we want to be relevant, we need to make sure that we are, um, walking it out, you know, we're walking it out. We are extending the hand and, um, and we're, we're eager for people to shake back. We are very, very eager to shake hands and, um, to welcome people. So I, I, you know, there are many, many things that people, people can do. Help us get this word out. Help us, you know, help us debunk the ideas and the thoughts around, oh, I'm not a part of that zip code. Or I'm not, help us debunk that. Because again, I'll just, I know our time is, 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 um, is short, but I'll, I'll just say, help us debunk that, that idea. Help us let people know that again, you know, we're, we're, we are about access. And, um, I just, I just, I've come to love this place in a very, very short amount, short amount of time. And, um, I need some allies. I need some partners and, um.
You can do that. That's an easy one. That's a easy one. I'll tell you, we're, we're talking on the backside, some of us who are part of programming. Um, um, in July, we, we canceled the meeting before the Fourth of July. We always do because it's Fourth of July. So what we're talking, but we get two meetings a month per chamber rule. So we're talking about maybe hosting one of those meetings at the Comer. So in fact, we're having a side convo right now, not to like, you know, but just so everyone knows, um, we are.
I love it. This is exciting. This is exciting. So.
Exciting. I, you know, um, um, real quickly, just because, and I actually know the answer to this, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask it. And then we're gonna move to breakouts. But, um, Eric asked, what's the best way to plan an event at the Comer? And can there be live music? I know the answer to this because I've done quite a few events at the Comer, but, um, Andrea, I'll let you, let you go with that.
Sure. Sure. Again, our, our events team is incredible. We, it's small but mighty. When I tell you just a few people are making it happen and the events are, um, are, is it, is it, is it fair, Wanda, to say that the events are reaching a fever pitch? I mean, it's just incredible. People are really coming, but, but certainly, um, you know, Kara's team, the special events team, are, are making magic happen despite COVID, despite things that are happening in this city. So definitely, definitely. So, um, I see some people have to, to jump and head off to, uh, other meetings, but thank you for spending time. Thank you. Always good to see you, Anne Marie. Always good to see you. So I'm so excited to be again in conversation with you all.
Everyone's saying, thank you so much and all the fun things. So what we do now is, and, and we, I, I give it to you, Gracie. Basically we moved to breakouts.
Okay. Breakout.
And then, and Andrea, we'd love it if you stayed on because you're gonna break out. If you don't have the time, we understand also.
No, it's all good. Thank you.
Kind of fun.
Yes. Thank you so much. Um, so again, I'm just gonna reiterate everyone in the chat, Andrea, that was saying, um, I just joined, me personally, but like multiple people said, I just joined, um, to become a member, to support you and your vision and everything that you have going on. And in addition, um, just saying how incredibly lucky and grateful we are to have you in Jacksonville. And, you know, I think very fortunate. We're just really excited about your energy. It's very infectious. And so thank you so much for joining us and your leadership here in Jacksonville. We are so, so, um, happy to have you. And please know the downtown council is always here to support you. Um, so before everyone kind of jumps off, if you have a nine o'clock, I'm just gonna pitch our upcoming meeting. The, the third Friday of the month, we will have Alex Tafakis with JWB Real Estate Capital. He is the principal there, talking about all of their incredible downtown development projects. So I put the link in the chat to sign up. Um, so please do that. So you are provided the Zoom information as that date approaches. Um, now for those of you that can stay on for the next 15 minutes, uh, we are gonna do breakout. So, um, I'm gonna ask Kathy Sutton at the Chamber to put us into a breakout room.